Good evening, everyone.[4.13][4.13](APPLAUSE). Realize we’ll still have some people trickling in, but we wanted to get started on what we have for you tonight, which is an exciting program. My name is Tom O’Brien. I’m the interim executive director of the Center for International Trade and Transportation here at California State University Long Beach. I’m also the associate director for Long Beach programs of the Metrans Transportation Center. Metrans is a university-transportation center partnership between CSULB and the University of Southern California. I’m pleased to see such a diverse audience here tonight. I’m looking forward to a really exciting discussion. And for those of you who are new to our campus tonight, please welcome, I’d like to welcome you, to not only our campus, but the 2014 CITT State of the Trade and Transportation Industry Town Hall meeting. This year, our topic is “Global Trends: Local Impacts, Big Decisions.” This is, amazingly enough, our 15th Town Hall. Since its beginning in 1999, our goal has been to provide a forum in which to explore a key issue challenging the goods movement industry and the many stakeholders who are in some way connected to the industry, including all of those of you who touched the cargo in some way, who handle it, those of you who are consumers of the goods, and the residents of the local communities through which the goods pass on their way to destinations across the globe. Over these many years, we’ve tackled such key topics as the environment, productivity, security. We’ve done a point-counterpoint where we’ve considered possible scenarios for the future of our region as a trade gateway. And this year, we look at the impact of global trade trends on our region and the role that each of us plays in identifying common solutions to shared concerns. We have an expert panel that will offer their own solutions and discuss how much we control, how much control we have over the outcome events that occur and decisions that are made halfway around the world. They will also respond to your questions in the Town Hall portion. Now, as many of you know, the first 14 Town Halls were held under the steady hand of CITT’s former executive director, Mary Ann Veneiras. It was her vision and leadership that made the Town Hall possible. She convinced all segments of the industry and the community that there was merit in sharing a forum in the spirit of education, even if each believed that consensus was neither possible nor desirable. And in that time, since that time, we’ve come a long way, and we’ve found a lot of common ground in the process. Now, Mary Ann is not here tonight. She’s doing what every good person who’s retired should be doing. She’s traveling on the road. But I know that she’s going to be watching the webcast, the playback version of this, when it’s made available. And so I’d like you to help me thank her for her dedication and commitment to the industry and the community.[183.62][183.62](APPLAUSE). In addition to the changes at CITT, we have new leadership at both ports, one of whom John Slangrup, you’ll be hearing from later, the chief executive from the Port of Long Beach. And we also have new leadership here at the university. This is President Jane Close Connolly’s first Town Hall as president of CSULB. And I’ve asked Gee Joshi, the Associate Vice President for International Education, and my dean, the dean of the College of Continuing and Professional Education, to welcome her and to introduce her. So let me turn it over to Gee. Gee Joshi.[223.12][223.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Tom. Official welcome remarks for this evening will be delivered by President Connolly in just a minute, but I too would like to welcome you to the university. The College of Continuing and Professional Education and its Center for International Trade and Transportation is dedicated to delivering educational programs, innovative research, and community outreach in the area of goods movement. As you know, CITT is the Long Beach home of several major research centers. Our research portfolio features policy analysis in the area of trade and transportation, as well as workforce development. Our outreach programs include educational forums that include research conferences, such as the International Urban Freight Conference, and media-based efforts, including podcasts, we call them container casts, and newspaper columns that engage the broader community in discussing surrounding international trade and transportation. And of course, tonight’s event, the nationally-recognized State of the Trade and Transportation Hall series, which we’ve been doing since 1999. CITT’s education programs include credit and non-credit programs in integrated logistics and feature the award-winning Global Logistics Specialist Program and the MTOP, Marine Terminals Operations Professional Designation Program, the only one of its kind in the nation. And I’m pleased to announce the starting, I’m pleased to announce, starting the fall semester of 2015, in partnership with our College of Business Administration, we will be offering the Master of Science degree in Global Supply Chain Management. This MS degree will complete the circle of our education programs in supply chain and goods movement, from conferences to certificates to bachelor’s degree and to the master’s degree. Now, this evening, I have the distinct pleasure to introduce our new president, Jane Close Connolly, who will deliver the welcome remarks. President Connolly arrived on campus in July, and from day one, she has been engaged immensely in the areas of campus life, meeting faculty, staff, and students on a daily basis. President Connolly is the seventh president of this university and the first woman to lead this great institution. And also, I am sure she is our first president who has an active Twitter account. Ask her a question, she will respond to you. Before coming to Cal State Long Beach, Dr. Connolly served as dean of the School of Education at University of California, Santa Barbara. Within UC, from November 2012 to August 2013, President Connolly also served as interim chancellor of the University of California in Riverside. In addition to UC, President Connolly has also served in leadership position, positions at other higher education institutions, as dean and professor of educational psychology at Texas A&amp;M University from 1996 to 2005, and as associate dean for research at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln’s Teacher’s College from 1989 to 1994. Previously, she has also held faculty positions at Texas Women’s University and Syracuse University. President Connolly is an accomplished scholar and researcher. She is the author of, author or editor of 21 books and more than 100 chapters, referred journal articles, and technical reports. Her areas of primary interest are interventions with children with disabilities, especially serious emotional disturbance, and aggressive children and youth, and family intervention. Her most, her most recent work investigates the application of the science of positive psychology to educational settings. She has presented papers and lectured throughout the world to education, to educational and mental health professionals on these topics. President Connolly also has, also has been the principal investigator on federal and state-funded initiatives aimed at developing better school-based approaches to helping children with emotional and behavioral disorders, improve teacher quality, especially in science and mathematics education. CD remains very interested in working with schools to increase the engagement of low-income, low-income children of, children of color with academic success and educational attainment. She was the chair of the UC Systemwide Executive Committee on Science and Mathematics Initiative and participated in the development of a UC-Santa Barbara campus-wide strategy to increase the quality, quantity, and diversity of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics majors who choose to pursue careers in teaching. President Connolly has won numerous teaching and professional organization service awards and has been very active in leadership position in the American Psychological Association and has served on national boards. President Connolly earned her bachelor’s degree in psychology from the College of New Rossell and PhD in school psychology from the University of Texas at Austin. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome President Jane Close Connolly.[577.32][577.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you and welcome, and thank you, Gee. I hope you didn’t feel like leaving after that long introduction. I promised to get a shorter one available to you all. I’m just delighted to welcome you to this annual State of Trade and Transportation Industry Town Hall, my first, but I understand our 15th. You’re here to discuss what changing trends mean to the economy, the environment, and the future of our region as a trade gateway. What happens here in Long Beach and in greater LA in the trade industry has national and international implications, as you all so well know. As you also know, this Town Hall is organized by our College of Continuing and Professional Education and its Center for International Trade and Transportation. And so thank you, Dean Joshi and Director Tom O’Brien, for your work in putting this together for our partners. By organizing this event, the university is fulfilling its mission to provide valuable research, education programs, and outreach to the goods movement industry, which is an area vital to our economic well-being in our region, in our state, and in the nation as a whole. The importance of this event is that the university is able to provide a neutral forum with an educational focus for the discussion of key issues facing the goods movement industry and our community. The impact of this event is made even greater by the award-winning videos produced annually by our own Advanced Media Productions. I see, leader down there.[680.32][680.32](APPLAUSE). I’ve had an advanced time to look at this. I know you all just love the video. And this video is shared with community groups, schools, and industry associations across the globe. In the area of research, Cal State Long Beach has created a global network of researchers through our partnerships. Already mentioned is the Metrans University Transportation Center, which is a partnership, as Tom said, with the University of Southern California. We also have the Metro Freight Center of Excellence through the Volvo Foundation that includes USC, City University of New York, my hometown, Korean Transportation Institute, and the French Transport Technology and Science Institute. Also, the National Center for Sustainable Transportation, a consortium of USC, UC Davis, UC Riverside, University of Vermont, and Georgia Tech. Many of the research projects and educational programs we offer respond to issues that are critical to the industry. Many topics to be addressed in this year’s Town Hall reflect the range of issues addressed by our educational programs. They include the changing nature of global manufacturing and distribution, and the impact of that on our cities, the need to balance economic development and impact mitigation, the need for good data and performance metrics, and the role of the university in helping to provide those, and matching employment opportunities with the right education and training opportunities. The Center for International Trade and Transportation at Long Beach State University has a 15-year record of success in logistics and supply chain management research and education. Programs such as Global Logistics Specialist Certificate, Marine Terminal Operations Program, and the many seminars, webinars, and custom research and training programs have served educational needs of professionals in every business and industry in this region. The Town Hall is perhaps our highest-profile public event for the goods movement industry, and we’re delighted to host it here. But CITT is working year-round to connect the university, the industry, and the community through newsletters, podcast series, and a regular column in the Long Beach Business Journal. In order for us to do these programs, we have received unparalleled support from industry partners for scholarships and event sponsorships. CSU Long Beach has benefited from these endowments, which are unique in the professional development programs. I want to thank the Los Angeles Transportation Club and the Harbor Association of Industry and Commerce for establishing these endowments. Thank you very much.[844.18][844.18](APPLAUSE). I also want to thank the Harbor Transportation Club, Port of Los Angeles, and Port of Long Beach for the continued and dedicated support and scholarship funds for our students. Thank you.[859.75][859.75](APPLAUSE). Last but not least, I was delighted to hear this evening and get a chance to share with you this evening that the Federal Highway Administration has just awarded Cal State Long Beach with a Center for Excellence for the Southwest Regional Surface Transportation Workforce Development. I hope we can get an acronym for that one, that was, that’s a really, that’s a long one. This will be one of only five Centers of Excellence around the country and will serve eight states, from California to Texas. Congratulations to all who worked on this project.[894.62][894.62](APPLAUSE) It’s a huge accomplishment. Thank you all for coming tonight. I know you’ll enjoy our lovely Carpenter Center. It’s 20 years old this year, you’re here for an anniversary, and I know there will be a lively discussion. Welcome. Thank you.[910.87][910.87](APPLAUSE).
President Connolly, just in commemoration of your first Town Hall, just a little something to remember, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.[924.62][924.62](APPLAUSE).
It’s too good a banner to not use, right? Thank you, President Connolly, for being here, and we also have to thank the president’s office for free parking, so thank you very much. Before we get to the video, I do want to thank a couple of other people who have made tonight possible. First is our CITT Policy and Steering Committee. In your program, you’ll find their names. These are committed people who have, who give a lot of time to the university, who have helped select tonight’s topic. They oversaw the development of the script for the video you’re about to watch. If you’d please stand and be recognized for your contributions, not only to tonight’s forum, but your commitment to the university. Members of the PSC.[971.12][971.12](APPLAUSE). I’d also like to call attention to the fact that we have a number of students here tonight, graduates and instructors in our programs. You’ve heard them mentioned, the Global Logistics Specialist Program, graduates of our master’s program, the Marine Terminal Operations Professional Program, and we have various students from both CSULB and USC here tonight. We, I believe, also have an entire class from the USC Viterbi School of Engineering, the Traffic Engineering and Control Class. Thank you to Eric Shen from the Port of Long Beach for helping make this your class tonight. So if I could have your, the future workforce, our students, please stand and be recognized as, as well as our instructors in the program.[1015.81][1015.81](APPLAUSE). And then we do have some, some distinguished guests I would like to call out. If you could please stand as I read your name, and then, audience, hold your applause until I finish reading. These are in no particular order, but we have a couple of port commissioners with us here tonight, Commissioner Rich Dines and Commissioner Doug Drummond from the Port of Long Beach, and former Port of Long Beach Harbor Commissioner-President Mike Walter is here. From the city of Long Beach, we have council member Patrick O’Donnell of the Fourth District, Dee Andrews of the Sixth District, Roberto Yuranga from the Seventh District, and I believe we also have, from the Ninth District, representing council member Rex Richardson, we have Tedrick Williams. And then representing the International Longshore and Warehouse Union are Joe Gasparov, the president of Locals 63. And we also have, I’m happy to say, Kim Chahut, who is the honorary consul general for Cambodia to the United States. So if we could, if you could stand, and we could welcome you all. Thank you.[1078.15][1078.15](APPLAUSE). And then finally, I’d like to thank the sponsors who make sure we can keep this event free of charge and open to the public. These includes our Metrans associates, the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, Majestic Realty Company, LA Metro, the Southern California Association of Governments, APM Terminals, and the International Longshore and Warehouse Union Locals 1363 and 94. Tonight’s sponsors are the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority, Ability Trimodal, Long Beach City College, and the California Community Colleges, Watson Land Company, BNSF Railway, the LA Customs Brokers and Freight Forwarders Association, and our two media sponsors, Pacific Maritime Magazine and the Long Beach Business Journal. Please make sure you take the special insert on goods movement that the Long Beach Business Journal did, that hit the street just yesterday. And the special insert is going to address some of the topics we’ll be talking about tonight. We have an exciting agenda. Tonight, we want to examine big-picture topics, bigger ships, e-commerce, 3D manufacturing, rising energy costs, or uncertain energy costs, emerging markets. And we want to ask if we’re prepared, as a region, to anticipate their possible impacts and to respond accordingly. To set the, set the stage, as we always do, we’ll start with a video. Following is our panel discussion with questions from you, the audience. We’ll conclude with a wrap-up and a few live polling questions. You should have already downloaded your QR reader with the help of one of our students, either out front or in the back. We have three survey questions, and the survey will open up near the end of the panel discussion. We want to make sure that your input is based on the impact, or on the impact of the discussion and not any preconceived notions you might have brought into the, to the room tonight. So no cheating. You’ll take the survey using your phone, using mobile internet data plans. If you’d prefer, you can always fill out the, what we call the old-school hard copy and drop it in the box on your way out. Both are just as valid. But we’re hoping to get some live feedback to the discussion at hand. First, though, the video. Every year, the Policy and Steering Committee gives Dave Kelly, the director of CCPE’s Advanced Media Production Center, the challenge of coming up with what is essentially a mini documentary that’s informative, as well as dynamic, and balanced in its portrayal of the issues. He never disappoints. So with that, let’s start with “Global Trends: Local Impacts and Big Decisions.”[1235.33][1235.33](MUSIC PLAYING).
In a world that is ever-changing, what changes in the world will have the greatest impact on trade and goods movement in the United States? And for that matter, how will these changes affect the economy of the nation, the West Coast, and Southern California? As with most discussions about the world economy and trade, the conversation begins in China. What will happen as the nation supporting the largest population and now incurring the greatest use of world energy supplies continues to expand and evolve? Many economists now believe China will emerge as the world’s biggest economy by 2019. What are the repercussions of China becoming number one in gross domestic product? A few trends in this area are becoming apparent. First, China’s wage scale will continue to rise, making production costs increase compared to other low-cost labor sources such as neighbors Vietnam and Cambodia. The chase for the cheapest labor in manufacturing will continue. China already has surpassed Mexico in terms of average annual wages. In 2013, China’s average monthly wages were 50% higher than Mexico’s. This trend could result in some manufacturing spreading to other parts of the world, including South Asia, South America, and parts of Africa. Closer to the West Coast, the recent pay scale increases in China may rekindle some of the dynamism of the Maquiladora manufacturing system in Mexico. As factories ramp up south of the US border, opportunities for near-sourcing supplier services could lead to a restructuring of the production process facilitated by geographic land access to the United States.
Historically, labor has always been moving, whether it was from England to New England and New England to the South and South to other parts of the world, and certainly the countries that we’re talking about. Central America, South America, Central Asia, Africa, those are all going to be areas of the world that, that there’s a lot of room for development. All of the countries that are, are countries that are seeking to build wealth are going to have to start out somewhere, and they usually start that with labor-intensive industries.
A second trend in China is the maturation of the internal consumer market. As China’s workers acquire more disposable income and savings become available for spending, the distribution of goods will focus more on supplying the domestic Chinese market. The end result will be fewer goods leaving China for export purposes. Chinese leaders understand the need to balance their economy with more internal consumption and less reliance on export revenue to support sustainable growth. A third trend coming out of China is a series of plans to increase the value-added aspect of productivity. In order to accommodate rising wages and compete with other nations at the upper rungs of the economic ladder, China realizes it must emphasize innovation and engineering, along with creativity and upscale services. The phrase that permeates the halls of strategic planners in China today is, products must be innovated in China, not just made in China. This means products and services must include higher levels of locally-created artificial intelligence, software capability, and remote interconnectivity. Related concerns about intellectual property rights also will need to be resolved.
If I was in China in a planning capacity, I’d be looking to not only continue growth from an export perspective, but serve that emerging middle class. Some of the figures that I’ve read, for example, is that people that have risen from the poverty level into middle class is equal to the entire population of the United States. So you have to be in a position to, to educate that middle class and help to make, make them be more innovative, but also serve that market with the products and services that traditionally have been exported from China. But I think it has a lot to do with training and education and elevating the games of individual people so that sectors and regions of the country, and ultimately, the whole country remains competitive moving forward.
A fourth issue in China that must be addressed is the overabundance of pollution caused by rapid unchecked factory growth and the largely unregulated use of oil and coal and industrial chemicals. According to World Health Organization guidelines, several of the most polluted cities in the world are located in China. The dark cloud of air pollution over major cities such as Shanghai and Beijing is derisively termed “airpocalypse” by many local residents. Environmental hazards in China serve as an ominous cautionary warning for other rapidly industrializing nations, including India, which is suffering from similar pollution problems. In Southern California, the San Pedro Bay has been successful in combating many of the environmental problems associated with rapid growth and massive goods movement operations. Clean truck initiatives, adherence to rigorous air quality standards and regulations, and efforts like Pier Pass to minimize congestion have significantly reduced the impact of diesel exhaust in the harbor community. Additionally, the use of natural gas-powered vehicles in the terminals and the electrification of docking facilities to provide power for steam ships, which would otherwise be burning bunker fuel, exemplify the kinds of measures that have reinforced the commitment concerning environmental mitigation. Future competitive shipping practices may require offering more liquid natural gas services to supplement shoreside electrification. Regarding the ground transportation front, significant efforts to expand on-dock rail service will pay competitive dividends to the ports of LA and Long Beach while eliminating numerous truck trips. The Alameda Corridor is viewed by many as a model of public-private transportation partnerships and also the best method for expediting discretionary cargo to distant locations with the least impact on local streets, roads, and highways. Ultimately, all future trends in trade will affect the ports of LA and Long Beach. Already, larger ships are beginning to berth in the harbor on a regular basis. The massive 12,000 TEU ships seen today may be replaced by 18,000 TEU mega-ships within a few years. With larger ships and consolidated cargo runs, harbor calls may become somewhat less frequent. However, the resulting surges in cargo containers could make congestion in the marine terminals more apparent, especially if several ships arrive at the same time. Bottlenecks in getting the containers out of the gates and onto the existing roadways in a reasonable timeframe may become another major issue. Less efficient use of port facilities and surface infrastructure, leading to delayed warehouse deliveries, could influence higher inventory costs. The community is certain to notice an uptick in truck traffic when these 18,000 TEU surges occur.
Efficiency is the most important thing right now, and the reason is, the carriers have invested in big ships. And they make money when those ships are at sea, not when they’re sitting in port. So if you’ve made an investment in a big ship and you’ve achieved that economy of scale, you don’t want to lose those savings by having the ship sit at the port longer than it needs to. You’re going to want to make sure you bring that ship to a terminal that can perform at a certain efficiency level. And that is why there’s a lot of focus now on the terminals in terms of improving efficiencies. And with the carriers forming alliances, they have a lot of bargaining clout, a lot of clout in, in kind of pushing the terminals to achieve those performance levels.
In spite of any potential cargo surges, the mega-ships would seem to provide a competitive advantage for the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach because of the deep harbors there and the enormous crane facilities capable of servicing the container volume. Few facilities in the US have the capacity to effectively handle such large ships on a regular basis. But shippers will be reluctant to send goods through Southern California if political and community opposition make it difficult to move cargo quickly through the system. Near-term 24-hour operations have been suggested by some as a strategy to attract and service more goods in an already well-equipped infrastructure. On the surface, this would appear to provide more job opportunities. Yet, the tide of technology is... Yet, the tide of technology is turning toward automation to provide more productivity while also lowering costs over time. It appears certain that both bigger ships will arrive and more automation will be implemented.
The Port of L.A. and Long Beach has the deep water. They have great terminals. The infrastructure is being invested heavily. They got great rail lines. We got the highways, the freeways, and so forth. So we're positioned well, logistically speaking, compared to anywhere else on the West Coast. So we're in a good place. The reality is that 70% of our cargo probably is going to come through this port no matter what because of how close it is to where it has to be delivered. 30% or maybe a little more is really the real discretionary cargo that we're going to have to compete for with Prince Rupert, with Mexico, with other... But our competition will not be any other port on the West Coast other than Prince Rupert. And you know, Prince Rupert has four cranes. They may expand eight cranes, you know.
Because of an aging society and widening gaps of income distribution, the consumer market in the U.S. is maturing. That means the growth rate of imports is likely to slow or decline in future years. Average household income in America has remained relatively flat for six years following the Great Recession beginning in 2008. Very slow growth in disposable income and a stubborn and often stagnant job market with highly stratified occupational opportunities have taken a toll on the typical middle-class consumer. Rents are rising in major cities faster than household incomes are expanding. Population growth has mostly leveled off in the U.S., meaning that overall demand-driven consumer activity will not take great leaps forward in the near future. Large consumer markets will propagate in nations where major development is either taking root or beginning to flourish. In addition to China, India would fall into this category, as could Brazil and possibly Indonesia. Long term, there may be possibilities in South Africa and other African nations such as Kenya. Turkey remains the brightest hope for a burgeoning consumer market in the Middle East, largely because of its relative stability, openness to the West, large population, and vibrant economy. Development of new technologies and new forms of resource acquisition in just a few short years have placed the United States in a much more competitive position on the energy front. These new technologies make it conceivable to start thinking about bringing some manufacturing back to the USA because of a lower cost of more abundant energy closer to home. Manufacturing and processing thrive on low-cost energy in addition to low-cost labor and materials. Should this homegrown energy begin to fuel more U.S. production work, it would likely have some impact on the amount of importing and exporting done through the West Coast. At present, the full impact of more abundant, cheaper energy on a large scale is yet to be determined.
I see the U.S. system as becoming, it already is the largest, but the most diverse energy system, and it's that diversification that should be viewed very positively. Creating more electricity with renewables is good. Creating, producing more oil and gas and using it for industrial manufacturing or making exports is good. Those are all good. I guess my view is we should, the diversification and growth of all forms of energy for the U.S. is a good thing because if you don't use it all, other people will and you can export it.
Perhaps the most important factor for future economic growth and trade patterns will be the formation of various trade and shipping alliances. The European Union is America's number-one trading partner, followed by China. However, China is busy shoring up alliances with its other East Asian neighbors and has made strong inroads into Africa and the Middle East, involving extensive oil contracts with countries like Iraq and Algeria, as well as Angola, Sudan, and Nigeria. South American countries entered a union of South American nations known as Unisur in 2008. How these and other trade relationships play out will have influence on where products and commodities ebb and flow. Regarding shipping alliances, 11 ocean carriers have banded together in groups of five and six companies in two separate corporate linkages. These two alliances are consolidating cargo containers on ships and routes, ultimately garnering greater combined efficiency and cost-control advantages. The now-abandoned P3 Shipping Consortium was rejected by Chinese regulators because of concerns about antitrust issues and unfair competition. The P3 would have included the three powerhouse European-based companies of French CMA CGM, Danish Maersk, and Swiss MSC. As an alliance, the P3 would have controlled 43% of the Asia-to-Europe market, 41% of transatlantic routes, and about 24% of the trans-Pacific market. In the final analysis, the wealth of nations today depends upon the flexibility of those countries to adapt to the changing circumstances of the global economy, including, number one, the chase for the cheapest manufacturing costs; number two, the implementation of environmental standards; number three, the ability to provide high-quality services and innovation; number four, the stability of political institutions; and, number five, the access to abundant energy supplies. All of these considerations will have great bearing on who wins and who loses in the future. Another way of perceiving that critical combination is to think of quality, cost, convenience, and consistency as the four cornerstones of success. If the goods movement industry in Southern California can place those cornerstones at the base of operations, then tomorrow can be bright. Opportunities exist in Southern California because of a large consumer market and a highly-developed modern infrastructure, combined with technical expertise and year-round good weather. Barriers to future trade growth include potential congestion, environmental concerns, community opposition, and competition for the most cost-efficient routes to the eastern half of the nation. The future belongs to those who can see it and then plan appropriately for it.
I'd like to ask at this time our moderator, our panelists, to come up to the stage. As they're doing, I'd also like to ask Dave Kelly to come up. I don't know how many of you have seen or met Dave, but he's been doing these videos for us. They're award-winning. They're a tremendous educational tool, a valuable service to the industry and the community. And I think he's done an amazing job tonight of packing in a lot of very useful and important information to set our discussion. So, Dave, are you here? There we go. Ladies and gentlemen, Dave Kelly. Thank you very much. On behalf of all the work and what you've done for CITT and CCPE and the university, we thank you. So this sets the stage. I think we have a lot to consider. Your moderator tonight, who will get things going, is Kristin Deekus. She is the CEO and Port Director of the Port of Huaynimi. And your panelist, John Slangerup, the Chief Executive of the Port of Long Beach; Bobby Oliver Jr., the President of ILWU Local 13; and Peter Friedman, tonight representing the Pacific Coast Council of Customs Brokers and Freight Forwarder Alliances, the Coalition of New England Companies for Trade, and the Agricultural Transportation Coalition. I'd like to remind you that their impressive bios are in your program, as is the program for submitting questions, which appears on page seven. Please, when we get to the question point, keep them on point, on topic, so no questions about contract negotiations, no multiple-part questions, and we ask that you're careful to keep it to questions instead of commentary. You can ask questions in two ways, by either submitting a card to one of the ushers who are going to be walking along the aisles. If you'd prefer to ask a question on mic, just please raise your hand, and the ushers will carry a handheld mic to you. Unlike in past years, we can't line up here for fire regulations, so we'll be able to accommodate you from your seat. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Kristin. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, audience. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and look forward to a dynamic discussion with all of you. I think that we'll just kick off and get right into the discussion. I think the video was superb and really laid a nice framework for what we're going to talk about here this evening. It's a nice segue for the discussion that we're going to have. And just to get the discussion rolling here, could you share from your perspectives, from your sector, how, what you think is most relevant and critical in this video, and share what you feel the real message is? And why don't we start with Bobby and work our way around?
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. The video was highlighted with the productivity in the ports and what we're doing to improve the throughput of cargo. And there's some significant problems, but all too often, we look at problems individually. And I think what the video shows is that as an industry now, we have to start looking at our problems and solving them with some cooperation and transparency. And I think that's something that's been lacking in the industry for a long time. We've seen some programs from certain entities in the industry that have had a detrimental impact on productivity, like the chassis, and I'm sure we'll get into the chassis at a later date. But I think looking forward, the cooperation and transparency between all the stakeholders in the supply chain to solve our problems mutually is going to be key to the future success of the ports and the workforce and the community around it.
Well, I'm here representing the cargo that you saw illustrated up there. And my primary message is that the cargo can move, and if it needs to, it will move. Cargo will move to the places that facilitate the transfer of that cargo from international sources to domestic sources, destinations or domestic origins to international destinations. I would think it would be a real mistake for anyone to think, even here, where you have the largest, most sophisticated, highest-volume port complex certainly in North America, to believe that that cargo is captive to this area. And I think the video portrayed some of the global changes that maybe we can discuss that will impact whether that cargo continues to flow through here. I would just say this, for the purposes of talking about agriculture and forest products, which is a huge export volume through the ports of L.A. and Long Beach and actually around the country, and when you take a look at the largest exporters from the United States, the largest are agriculture and forest products. There's nothing that we produce here in this country in agriculture and forest products that cannot be sourced somewhere else in the world. Nothing. So when ports aren't operating, those foreign customers have lots of options. And as we saw 12 years ago, when the West Coast ports were not operating, some of those foreign customers went, for example, for almonds, they couldn't get the California almonds. We know they're the best ones in the world. You can measure them by fat content. It's not just that they're members of the Agriculture Transportation Coalition, but they're the best almonds. But the Japanese candy makers couldn't get them. Their customers wanted candy. Those confectioners did not stop producing. They turned to Turkey, and to this day, 12 years later, some of those customers have not been retrieved by the California almond exporters. They're still buying from Turkey, and they probably will continue. So that's lost cargo, lost cargo volume that will never come back here. That's the sort of thing we've got to be careful about.
Thank you very much. And John?
Yeah, I agree with the obvious-changing landscape in terms of customers, where they're sourcing materials, where they're exporting materials. The port complex here in San Pedro Bay is clearly in a very strong position going forward. The concern, of course, we have is the efficiency of our system. That's the near-term concern. We've seen congestion continue to increase, totally subject, obviously, to the transition to very large ships. So the entire mix of freight has changed in terms of how to handle it. The systems required to support large inflows of container volume. And all of that has been poorly prepared or poorly planned for from a port perspective. In my view, the supply chain from origin to destination is stressed. In some cases, it's flawed. It is not an integrated system. It doesn't function as an integrated system. And so we, in order to remain competitive going forward, we must figure out a way to make the entire supply chain operate as a single system, highly interdependent, highly interactive, and very, very intensive information systems to control it. So that's where our focus is right now.
Okay. If you all could look into your crystal ball and predict what's going to happen in the future, could you share with us what you perceive as threats facing the industry and your particular sector? What do we need to be paying attention to today? Is it the Panama Canal? Is it the Suez Canal? Is it nearshoring? Is it reshoring? If you could shed some light of what your priorities are in the face of all these global trends that we just saw in the video today, that would be helpful. John, why don't you take this one first?
Well, certainly, as I mentioned, port efficiency, port velocity is a critical thing to remain competitive. The concern we have is that right at the very moment, we're probably three to five days behind our normal flow of goods. We're delayed three to five days, and that has a ripple effect throughout the entire supply chain that is quite devastating for those that plan, particularly at this time of year during peak periods. I'm not going to get into the details with this answer because I'm sure we're going to have a chance to talk about that further, but when I look at the threats, I look less at the threats of the Panama Canal. I look more at the threats of volumes moving through the Suez Canal and movement into the eastern seaboard and through Texas as more competitive threats to us. We're not seeing loss of volume to the West Coast ports, including Prince Rupert and the Mexico ports. We're seeing, actually, an increase so far this year. We're up about 2% over our prior high-volume peak of 2012, and that is, and we've seen corresponding decrease in our other West Coast competitors. So we're doing the right things. We've made enormous investments in infrastructure throughout the complex, and we continue to do so. And our ability as a complex to make billions of dollars of investment, to continue to strengthen our position for large ships, is the one reason we're going to be successful. There's very few other options, and Panama Canal is not one of them. And when you look at the stats, we, about 99% of our volume comes from Asia, about 1% from Latin America. That will shift, I think. That will change. I think it's a great opportunity with Latin America. But of the 99%, 96% comes through, you know, East Asia. And those flows are being supported by continued growth from those marketplaces into the U.S. economy. So I see that as continuing, but not unless we remain highly competitive from a velocity and throughput perspective, and that is a key concern right now.
Peter, representing cargo, how could you enlighten us?
Let me say at the outset that exporters and importers, and some of the importers that I'm speaking about are some of the largest consumer-name brands that we all know, the shoes we wear and athletic apparel and clothing and so forth. People in Pateka, Rhode Island, or in Canton, Massachusetts, in Indiana and Illinois, those are the importers. The exporters, people in Dakota Dune, South Dakota, places in Indiana, the soybeans and so on. These are huge, huge volumes of product. And the market is currently in China, and that's going to be the growing market because of the aging population there, as well as the rising disposable income in China. So that's the market for U.S. agriculture and forest products exports. So that's the market for US agriculture and forest products exports. The question is, will agriculture and forest products be able to get there? The best way to get there is through the West Coast ports. The West Coast ports is the most direct way, and agriculture, forest products desperately want these West Coast ports to be sufficiently competitive, sufficiently efficient, that will allow very low-margin products with global competition that are fungible. Nobody cares in Japan whether the broccoli was chopped in California, or in Costa Rica, or Chile, or Australia. Nobody cares, and it's not a brand name. The ports here on the West Coast have to be sufficiently efficient that allows our agriculture exports and forest products and other exports to access and be competitive in those foreign marketplaces. Now, that's what we want. What's the threat? Consumer, and it was touched upon in this video subtly, but sufficient if you look at it, manufacturing for the US consumer is already shifting out of China for footwear and apparel and consumer electronics. It's going south. It's going to Vietnam. We've read recently of some of the problems that Gap and Victoria's Secret and others are having in production of apparel in Bangladesh, but they're addressing those issues. If you're producing product in China, the way to the US consumer market is across the Pacific and through the US West Coast gateway ports. If you start producing down in Bangladesh and India, guess what? You're closer to the Suez Canal then. You take the route through the Suez Canal, which does not have the capacity constraints that we know the Panama Canal already will have, and you go straight to what are now going to be five US East Coast ports within five years that have the capacity to handle the biggest ships. We have here on the West Coast Seattle, Tacoma, LA, and Long Beach a monopoly on those very deep draft ports and deep draft ships. But there are going to be five on the US East Coast within five, six years that can handle it. And guess what? Two-thirds of the US population, that's the US consumers, live over there on the eastern one-third of the country. Six of the seven fastest-growing states by population are over there on the eastern one-third of the country. That's where the consumers are. So you could see a trend of cargo moving away from the US West Coast ports just to get better access to the consumers from new sourcing regions, that is, in South Asia. And I think that could absolutely turn the supply chains on their head and be ultimately the greatest threat to this area.
Bobby, on labor?
Well, I think when we talk about threats, our biggest threat is ourselves. It's the antiquated way that we've been doing business in the twin ports. It's been seven years since we've hired new workers in the port. There's 1,000 people that we've lost, and we've failed to train. We need to move cargo and not have cargo sit on the docks. There's some facilities that understand the process. They work hoot shifts. They put cargo down the freeways during the middle of the night. There's terminals right now that UTR drivers, the truck drivers that move the containers from the hook into the yard, they'll spend 10 to 15 minutes of wasted time looking for a spot in the yard to park a container, and that can't happen. The ports are too expensive, and the property is too valuable to see containers sit on the docks for days and days and days. And there's multiple issues that cause that. You've got the lack of chassis. You've got the mismanagement of the planning of the yards. We're still living in an era, the mentality of some of the marine terminal operators is 15, 20 years ago. We're bringing in bigger ships. We're bringing in more cargo. As we sit here tonight, there's four or five container ships sitting offshore waiting to come in. So we're looking for chassis. We're looking for an expedited way to get the cargo off the dock. But it's going to take cooperation between all the stakeholders, the port authorities, the marine terminal operators, the big box carriers, to think outside the box, to stop looking at the short-term profit gains and start looking at what's going to move this industry forward. And on a very selfish note towards the labor force, again, we have to get the hiring process back going. For seven years, we've languished without a single person hired from our casual hall. And these casuals today are working five days a week, and yet we can't get them into the union to get them trained, to operate the machines, to move the cargo. We're bringing in Chilean fruit, and sometimes we have problems filling forklift jobs because we don't have them in train because they are still sitting at a casual hall waiting seven, eight years to be hired off the street. So I think there's changes that need to be done throughout the supply chain to the marine terminal operators and with the union's cooperation. And with those changes, the threat that we're going to dispel is the threat right here at home. If we start changing the way we do business, if we start going back to what is most important, and it's always been since I came on the waterfront, the hook should never hang. And that means that container should always be coming off the ship, and there should be a truck waiting for it, and it should be rolling into the yard. And when the truck drivers come into a yard, they should be able to go to a container, pick it up, and get out the gate. So these long queue times, the congestion in the terminals, the lack of the ability for the workforce and the ILW to find a spot, discharge 500 to 600 containers, and stay in that spot and not have to hopscotch around a 400-acre facility looking for room to put containers. These guys should be doing a turn every six minutes, but sometimes at some of the bigger terminals, it's 20 minutes in between the time they get a container and the time they come back to the hook. And that's all about planning. That's all about having the assets available as far as the chassis to get the containers out the gate. And as the video pointed out, we do need to be a 24-hour port. If we are the biggest port complex in the world, and which we are, regardless of what the numbers say, what we do here impacts every congressional district in this country. And we need to be a 24-hour port. We need to put people to work, move containers while families are home sleeping, move them down the highways in the middle of the night. And that's the key. If we can't adjust our thinking and our cooperation between the parties, then we are the biggest threat to the Port of Long Beach and the Port of LA.
You know, Bobby, Bobby's absolutely right. You know, our longshoremen get it. They understand it. They work it every day. They see the truth out there. The reality is that the system has a number of bottlenecks. It does not function, as I mentioned, as a system. We're addressing, as a port, our traditional role has been to facilitate discussion among the stakeholders and seek improvements in cooperation and systems between the stakeholders. To me, that's not enough anymore. I think the Port of Long Beach has taken a very active position, and we're going to address the chassis issue by simply becoming an operating group, at least when it comes to chassis. There's a number of systemic issues that we face that are all overcomeable, if that's a word. And in fact, the chassis is kind of the current one because it's peak season, and we don't have enough chassis available to move what Bobby's describing as a really constricted situation. And so we're going to do that. We're pursuing a path that will inject thousands of chassis into the system, and we will not allow peak to be affected by a lack of chassis in the future. We simply cannot allow that to happen, and we will not allow that to happen. And then after we solve that problem, after we are able to have the assets available for peak operations, then we'll start to address the other systemic issues that exist in the port. And Bobby also is correct in that these stakeholders have a stake in how we do this. And to me, it's all about systems and visibility and transparency of these systems. We know exactly what's shipping from origin. We know exactly what's on the ship, when it's going to arrive. We have the ability to plan all the way to the warehouse, all the way to destination. And all of those systems that discreetly function are not integrated as a single system. And my view is that until we achieve a level of systems integration where everyone can plan and have visibility into the performance of the system, we will continue to struggle. PierPass is an example of this. PierPass is an excellent example of a solution that addressed a problem of congestion by adding additional shifts and figuring out a way to pay for that. I think there's a PierPass 2.0 in the near future that will start to look at the integration of systems over the top of that. And to me, the ability to plan as a system is crucial to our ability to stay competitive. Because when I look at what's happening with the flows of commerce, you know, no matter how you look at it, Asia and South Asia, which are our customers and our origin source, it's a straight line to the East Coast through our ports. And that's going to continue to be that way. We're not going to change the physical dimensions of the world. What we will fail to do is if we do not get the system to be extremely efficient and very high velocity, very high velocity from a productivity standpoint, we will start to lose our edge. We're not going to let that happen. So as the business continues to grow, as consumer demand continues to grow, it'll be a big push for us to stay at pace with that. We are, as I said, the one port complex in the United States that is prepared now and is receiving these very large ships, and is changing the face of the entire logistics supply chain. Now, to the point of agriculture and forest products, I don't disagree that that's a massive business. Today, the two ports have less than 1% of that market share. For us, from a volume standpoint, from volume exporting the West Coast, it represents about 6% for both ports. So that's a dismal number. Only 6% of our exports represent agriculture and forest products. So you would think that's a massive opportunity, but it's not because we can't handle it. We can absolutely handle it. The trouble is that where all that export goods come from, they have to travel on heavyweight corridors. Those heavyweight corridors don't exist in California. They're where we simply don't have the infrastructure to support movement to San Pedro Bay for those kinds of goods. So it's an issue that we have to look at systemically. I think it's an issue that we can deal with legislatively. It's certainly a massive infrastructure issue, and we're going to look at that. But for right now, we're going to continue to grow our business. We're going to continue to defend ourselves against other ports that are in other countries that are beginning to develop infrastructure, although very small, you know, but prepared for the larger ships, and we will fight that tooth and nail.
And in that discussion, it sounds like we really do need to think out of the box and be diligent to remain competitive. And I think you hit on a lot of local issues and how we have to prepare for the future. And Peter, would you like the opportunity to come? From your perspective, what you think some of these pressing local concerns are and what we need to do to prepare for the future?
I would say those issues that were just raised are not local issues. They have the international impact, certainly the national impact you both mentioned. But I will tell you that there are some people who are located 1,500 miles east of here who are very upset about PierPass. I believe the current configuration of PierPass is driving cargo away from this complex here. It is disastrous for many exporters. It is unfair, and it has now become fundamentally a dishonest system. We have asked the terminal operators exactly how much is collected and exactly where it's spent and who's receiving it. We have never, in the history of PierPass, received an answer to that. Yeah, they say we need more because, you know, the labor costs in the evening and so forth, but they never say exactly. We can't track it. I would say, on behalf of the export community, we'd love to see public agencies, for example, LA and Long Beach, take it over because at least then it would be transparent. Then you could start moving to making this a system that does not create congestion, as it is now doing, to one that could reduce congestion, as has been suggested tonight. Now, I would say also that the Port of Long Beach has done a good job and better than all the other ports in LA and Long Beach in reaching out, in reaching out to people who can actually provide some guidance. The agriculture exporters, who really had a fair amount of say and were certainly impacted by the clean truck program, certainly liked the Port of Long Beach's clean truck program better than the Port of Los Angeles'. And I will tell you, I won't go into the commodities, but there were significant exports that went through Long Beach as a result and did not go onto carriers on their calls into Los Angeles. PierPass is one. You have also worked very well with the Los Angeles Customs Brokers and Freight Forwarders Association. And frankly, there's nobody who kind of, on the cargo side, that knows exactly how cargo transits in and out better than freight forwarders and customs brokers, often overlooked, but certainly knowledgeable. The Port of Long Beach, quite a number of years ago, removed the penalties assessed on containers that are held at the terminal too long, when they're held because of a government law enforcement order. Customs and Border Protection wants an inspection. Ridiculous to charge a detention penalty for cargo that's held there at the order of Customs and Border Protection. The other port in the Port of Los Angeles Long Beach complex has not quite seen their ability to do, just to mimic what you all did a number of years ago. So I would say that while I talk about these sort of global threats and challenges, the fact that when I was in Charleston about three weeks ago, I asked how many new distribution centers of employing over 1,000 people have opened up in the last two years? There were hands all up in the audience. If I asked that today, how many distribution centers right here in the LA region, over 1,000 employees, have opened up in the last year and a half? I think the answer is one. Skechers, right? But in Charleston, hands are up all over the place. That's where distribution centers are being built because the cargo is betting on those ports as their gateway ports to serve the country. So that's a threat. But on the other hand, there's nothing you can do about some of those things other than maximize your own efficiency so that you're dependable and affordable. And I can tell you that the importers and exporters do want to work with the ports, labor, with everybody, on achieving those improvements.
Okay. Well, before we turn it over to the audience, I'll give both John and Bobby a chance to react to those comments. Bobby, do you want to?
Yeah, again, when we operate these facilities in a manner that's focused on getting the containers off the ship, getting them out the gate, I think there's nobody in the world that does the work that the ILW members in Southern California do. We can move, we've shown it with the numbers in one of the terminals here in Long Beach. When we're allowed to do our job, and when the assets are there, we can move cans 30 to 40 an hour. But again, when you're only moving 18 containers an hour because of the backlog in the supply chain, nothing to do with necessarily the workforce or the MTOs, but the truckers not being there, the chassis not being there. When that supply chain, and I'll have to disagree with John, I think the supply chain is broke. I think when you see queue lines at certain terminals in the Port of Long Beach that are an hour and two hours long, why would the truckers want to come here and do one turn in an eight-hour period? We have to open up the gates 24 hours a day. We have to move containers up and down the freeways to minimize the congestion on the terminals. These bigger ships are coming in. We need the space on the docks. There is no more space. We're not going to landfill another 400 acres, as we did for APMT. There's no more land out there. We've got to maximize the land we have better than what we're doing right now. And the investment of the millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in automation, again, I'll disagree with what the video showed, is automation is not the wave of the future. We're seeing the flaws in automation right now in the Port of Los Angeles. We're seeing machines that run into each other. We're seeing a lack of productivity. Machines only be able to deliver 18 to 20 containers during a day when a human and a machine can deliver anywhere from 50 to 60 to truck drivers. So I think that money is better spent on the infrastructure of the ports, on the highways, on the chassis, on the terminals themselves, on better planning mechanisms, and tying all the terminals in into what we call this gray pool, to where these truck drivers can come down into the ports, share a chassis, and move freely between the ports and between the terminals, receiving their containers and moving them to the distribution centers. And that's the key. The longer the cargo sits on the dock, the more congestion there is. The more congestion there is, the longer it takes for cargo to get off the ship. And that's where the clog begins. And when you have a clog, you've got to go in there and get rid of it. And it's not by individual fixes. It's going to be by a collective fix that we all sit down and work it through. And that's where I think John is, he's been a leader on it. I've met with him a few times already, and transparency is a key word. Those companies and freight forwarders and trucking companies and marine terminal operators and shipping lines that understand the importance of transparency and cooperation in this day and age, they're going to be the ones that succeed. And the ones that fight to the bitter end to be, I think the phrase is penny-wise and pound stupid, those are the ones that are going to suffer. And that cargo is going to move, and it's going to move fast. So we've got to be smarter. We've got to be smarter in what we do, and we've got to have more cooperation. And I look forward to the Harbor Commission of Long Beach with John and the Harbor Commission of John and the Harbor Commission of the Port of Los Angeles, which is also another fine port, and, uh, Dave Arian and, and their new executive director, Gene Soroka. I think you have, uh, a new breed of, of leadership amongst the port directors, uh, the commissions, uh, elected politicians within both of our communities that we're looking for solutions. Uh, pointing the finger in the blame game, in the JOC or the blame game in the Long Beach Business Journal, that doesn't cut it anymore, folks. It just doesn't. We're all in this together. And the sooner that we realize that, the sooner we all sit down at the table and start coming up with common solutions, the sooner we're going to move, move forward. Uh, and I think that's going to be the message that everybody should leave here with tonight, is cooperation between all the stakeholders in the supply chain. That's a must. Without that, nothing we do, not the Pier Pass, not any other program that's proposed, is going to solve this problem. It's going to be us solving it together.
John, do you want to react to those, uh, comments and also let us know if you think there is a risk here in terms of a, a sea change and, and a, a cargo diversion to the East Coast ports?
I don't think there's a sea change. I, I, I mean, I, I, I think it's a wake-up call that, uh, that we've got ourselves in a congestion, a chronic congestion situation. Uh, the system itself, um, I guess arguably could be said it's broken. It's really just delayed at the moment. It just needs to be, uh, wrung out and, and, and it needs to be, uh, it needs to be worked on through, uh, a systems approach. Uh, Pier Pass, um, is, is a key component of that going forward. What we do in terms of, um, uh, taking Pier Pass to the next level is going to be a subject of debate. Uh, Gene Soroka and I, uh, talk about this quite frequently, um, and we have, um, petitioned the, uh, Federal Maritime Commission to allow us to, uh, engage, uh, as, uh, uh, dual ports, uh, to bring all the stakeholders together. And we will, and I mean all the stakeholders, uh, to, uh, continue to, uh, uh, iron out what has to happen. Um, chassis is an easy fix. It's just a mismanaged mess. And when we, when we apply the, the proper amount of chassis to the system, we will in fact solve the problem. And, and just for the audience, just so you understand the core issue, with chassis, you hear that in the media a tremendous amount, and I'll just explain for a moment what the issue is. The issue is that the, uh, the, the ocean carriers divested, uh, of those assets, of those chassis that, that all the containers are mounted on and, and moved through the system. Um, the, the chassis themselves, uh, are the, they were bought up by a number of companies, three primary ones, and those companies, uh, optimized their, their system, uh, and their profitability by simply looking at the average volume of movement through the ports. Not, they don't consider peak. Therefore, they don't have the, uh, units or equipment necessary to address peak demand. Uh, it's a critical flaw. No one in the logistics business would ever consider, uh, running a system that didn't address peak. Um, uh, in all of my years in, in the logistics business, this would be a, an immediate termination of executives that would be involved that way, uh, that would, would, would ever ignore peak demand. So we're fixing that part. It's just a matter of having an additional pool available for peak demand, and we'll make that work. Now, once, once the chassis problem is fixed, and we're going to fix it, uh, then we look at all the other flaws. And, you know, the truck turn times will be affected positively by the availability of chassis. But when I look at the, the, and we've talked about it, Bobby, about the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, um, capability of, of, of being open to the truckers, I think, uh, that's, that in part is, uh, the correct answer, but I would rather see a dynamic planning system that says, as this volume comes, because it, it comes and ebbs and flows. We want a system, not just a straight-out, seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-day port operation, but what we want is a dynamic system that, that plans for, recognizes, and deals with effectively these massive flows of, of goods, uh, into the port complex, and we can have visibility all the way to the VCO or the, or the cargo owner. Um, so we can manage all of that logistics, uh, system. And until we have that capability, and that's why I call it Pier Pass 2.0, I don't know who owns it. If it's a port, that's fine, but whoever owns the next Pier Pass equivalent or runs it, it, it's got to be the next version. It's got to be information-intensive. And I think that's the answer to the entire inefficiency that's happening. So fix chassis first, address system, uh, performance through information management, and I think we've got a, a chance of being the most efficient and, and effective, um, port complex out there.
John, while we have you, I'm talking chassis. Real quick, I'll take a, a card here from the, uh, audience, and it says, "Didn't carriers anticipate the chassis issues since New Jersey had similar problems a year ago?"
You would have thought so. Um, you know, the, there's, um, it always surprises me how, uh, how, uh, once a, a strategic decision is made, that the, uh, the, you know, the, the consequences of it aren't fully thought through because you're offloading one problem, you're not really anticipating the system problem. Maybe they put too much faith in, in, um, other organizations, uh, understanding the environment. Um, I, I, I will never, ever understand how peak was not considered as part of the overall, uh, uh, you know, design for the pools. Um, but these, these, um, it did happen. Um, I can't, uh, I can't, I wasn't here. I would have liked to have been here. Um, we would probably not have this problem.
Thank you. Um, I understand there are microphones floating around the audience too, and what I'll do is I'll go back and forth between the cards and, and the audience questions. I think we have a gentleman here with a question.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Mongaluso, Journal of Commerce. I have a question for Bobby Alvera. Uh, the ILW is contributing to the congestion problem, hard timing, tray pack for much of this year over automation. Um, last week, the ILW began putting trucks through secondary and tertiary, uh, safety inspections, never done before. And truckers report a number of, uh, chassis are red-tagged for what they think are dubious reasons. So, uh, these actions didn't have to happen. The ILW turned them on like a light switch. Are you, as president of Local 13, ready to turn them off, to tell your members, cut it out at least until we're out of this congestion?
Okay, so, uh, I should have expected this. Let's, let's go to the first question. So with regards to tray pack, um, when you employ robots, uh, that have the capability of being accessed from, uh, halfway across the world, and those robots end up running into each other and dropping 500-pound motors within 20 feet of a marine clerk, it presents a, a big issue. We've seen the implementation of this, um, this technology rushed on the waterfront. I think that there was some short-sightedness on tray pack's management and their board of directors into rushing the technology into service rather than providing a period of time, which Long Beach Container has been a good model for that, of going through the process step by step, uh, making sure that something works before you put, uh, men and women in the line of fire. So will I turn, so-called turn off of a switch that is making sure that robots aren't, uh, running into human beings and that somebody at a rogue computer, uh, somewhere around the world is not accessing that machine and, uh, deciding to create an, uh, industrial accident here? Uh, I will not be, um, ever in a position to turn that switch off. Now, just recently, the city of Los Angeles, with the help of Mayor Garcetti, stepped in with tray pack and the ILW and the port of Los Angeles to work through, uh, what we're calling a, uh, systems assessment. It's a, um, a look through their entire system with a independent third-party IT firm. And when that process is done, which they just started, they'll know the entire makeup of the electronic system, the robots, uh, the mechanisms, who can access them, and we're going to employ some firewalls, uh, to prevent some protection for our workforce. And, uh, s- sort of like cybersecurity. In fact, the company that's doing it was in charge of cybersecurity for the San Diego Airport and the LAX Airport. So, uh, they're very knowledgeable in going into a system. Uh, we accepted robots. In 2000, in our last contract, we accepted the fact that automation was coming. But what we didn't accept is, uh, some Hollywood movie where robots are roaming around, uh, without commands and with the ability to, uh, be manipulated from people outside the industry or outside even this community. So, uh, that process is in the works. Uh, I think it's a, it's disingenuous to say that it's some type of, some type of labor action. Um, how many accidents do we need to have? How many near deaths do we have to, to see before we realize that some technology that is brand-new, first time on the West Coast, just isn't working correctly? It will work at some point, and when it does work properly and safely, then we'll be there, hand-in-hand with tray pack and the port of Los Angeles to move as much cargo as those machines will provide. Uh, but until such time as we can do that safely, I don't think anybody in the room wants to be around or drive a vehicle down the road, um, pick up a Toyota Corolla, so to speak. And, uh, how would you like to be around a machine that somebody in, uh, Finland can log on to their computer and right-turn Clyde-type thing? I, I don't think that's safe, and again, I, I think it's a misclassification of what's going on. As far as the chassis, uh, for three years, there's been no light switch turned on. Three years ago, we entered into an arbitration process that, um, the ruling was that there was a, a certain step process that these machine or these chassis would be inspected. If any of you drive the 710 freeway, you know, three years ago, it was a minefield of landing legs, um, pieces, mud flaps coming off of these chassis. Since that program has been instituted, uh, if you drive down the 710 freeway today or tomorrow, you won't see maybe one, if any, uh, piece of chassis laying in the freeway. So the safety of the community has been, uh, paramount in that issue. Uh, what happened recently, the only change to this program that we've been doing with the inspections, uh, was predicated on, uh, last week, we had a truck driver's clutch pop, and while a mechanic was underneath of his chassis inspecting the tires, that chassis lurched forward, and that man was almost crushed. So what we've done is asked simply, while the truck driver pulls up to a roadability station, there's no secondary inspection, there's no third inspection, fourth inspection, there's the same inspection we've been doing for three years. All we've asked is the truck driver turn his truck off and step out of the cab. It's a practice that's used at ports up and down the West Coast. It's a practice that's been used here in the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach by certain mechanics based on their preference of choice. Some mechanics have had, uh, bad incidents and bad experiences where trucks have popped a clutch or a truck driver has left too quickly. Um, I met with the Harbor Trucking Association today, and, um, that was not part of our discussion, and I don't think, uh, there's any concern on their part. They understand that there's a health and safety aspect. And the 20 seconds it takes for a man or woman to turn a machine off, step out of the cab to provide an element of safety for the mechanic that's working under a 25-ton container, um, that could roll over him and crush him, I, I don't think that that's too much to ask for. Um, what was your third question, Bill? Sorry.
The one was the red tagging of the chassis.
So the red tagging of the chassis, I think this goes to the chassis issue. When the shipping lines divested of their interest in the chassis, it was purely financial. It wasn't based on logistics or what was good for the industry. And again, we have to do what's good for the industry. That's everybody. That's the longshoreman, that's the shipping lines, the MTOs, all the way through the supply chain. We have to do what's best for the industry. So when they got rid of their chassis, you now have companies that own these chassis that are making financial decisions based on their profits rather than decisions that are based on what's going to be best for the industry. When truck drivers have to wait for chassis, that's bad. Now, the chassis that are being red-tagged, we're not going to put a chassis on the road that has a bid inspection. And for you, those of you that don't know what bid inspections are, it's required inspections through, uh, the Department of Transportation or the California Highway Patrol. We're not inclined, nor are we provided the, uh, leeway to allow that chassis to go outside the gate. When these companies come down onto the docks, what they're told is, here's a stack of 500 chassis. Well, fix that one, but don't fix those two. Fix that one, but don't fix those five. So those chassis get stacked and stacked and stacked, and somebody somewhere sitting behind a desk is looking at a spreadsheet, probably with a couple degrees and probably 100 points smarter than me on an IQ test, dictating whether or not they're going to fix that chassis. That's not good for the industry. So are we going to release, uh, chassis, or will the companies release chassis that aren't safe to put on the road? Absolutely not. I don't think if you went to the Ford dealer, the Chevy dealer, the Toyota dealer, I don't think if you went to, uh, Frigidaire who sells you your fridge, if it's not safe and if it can't be utilized safely, I don't think it's going to be sold and it's not going to be provided to the customer. So again, the customer has to be provided something that, that works. Once these three major companies that own the chassis realize that the profit comes in throughput, the profit comes with productivity. And we get that productivity by having that asset available for these truckers. And it can't be available to them when it has one landing leg, two lights out, uh, no air brakes. I don't think anybody here tonight wants to get on the 710 freeway. We saw what happened yesterday at the, on the 110 freeway. A 40-foot container disengaged from the truck, and a car was crushed. Uh, I don't even know the state of the two people that were in the car, but I hope, you know, I hope they're all right. My, my prayers are with them. But safety is of the utmost concern, and I think that's something that the employer groups and the union have always stressed is, above everything else, productivity, profit, above everything else, we all want to go home at night. And I don't think people that drive on the streets want to see unsafe chassis. They don't want to see containers flipping off of chassis. And, and that's the root of it. So there's been no, uh, active, uh, contractually-related, uh, uh, action going on on the waterfront. And I know that it's, the Jerry Springer of, of the world is, is Bill works for. They love to demonize the workforce, and they love to put out these fantastic stories of, of what's going on and that I'm in a dark room and we're meeting about the downfall of the ports and we're going to terrorize the waterfront. I want every ship in this world to come here. When we brought this ship in from Zim and we worked it, what I told the Israeli consulate is, I'm not into politics. We load and unload ships. Bring your ships here and we'll do it. So when that message gets out, brother, and I hope you put it in tomorrow's, uh, edition or tonight's blog, the ILW's here to work, but let's do it safely and let's do it productively and let's, let's work together to make this industry thrive.
A very passionate message by Bobby. Peter, why don't we, um, have you field this question, as we're talking about automation and, uh, and, and safety and these sorts of things from the cargo perspective, um, why don't you shed some light on, on these issues as well as answer this question? Why is it that perishable X-ray containers are not a priority?
Would you repeat? Why are perishable? I didn't hear.
It says, "Why is it that perishable X-ray containers are not priority?"
Uh, if I can understand the question.
A little confusing, but I thought it was agriculture perishable.
Yeah, well, that's right. You know, and that gets into the velocity. Um, if you are in Dakota Dune, South Dakota, uh, or in Arkansas, and you are the largest protein producer, that's meat producer, in North America, and you're exporting, velocity's key. So there's always a balance here. Safety is paramount, absolutely true, because these cargo owners do, are deep pockets. They're going to be the ones targeted if there's a problem, that somebody's hurt. So they have to, uh, obey the law. But here's an example. A, uh, container load of chilled, chilled pork, when it arrives in Korea, is worth about $175,000. That's the base wholesale when it arrives in Korea, chilled. Now, you know what happens if you take some hamburger meat and put it in your refrigerator, it could be chilled, but after a while, it starts turning brown and then green and purple and all sorts of things, right? So you can't just have it chilled forever. To have it chilled on the, and delivered so that they can put it on the supermarket shelf and have a few days in Korea, it has to move expeditiously from Arkansas by truck, then by train, then to the port, through the port, on the ship, which is going back by slow steaming now, thank you. Uh, bigger ships now that take multiple days to load because they're so dang big, that may or may not go straight based on their schedule, or they may deviate some, somewhere else. If that ship or that whole process takes too long, or if it gets stuck in the port for any reason, whether it's chassis inspection, any reason, the guy in Arkansas or in Dakota Dune, Dune, South Dakota has one choice. Turn it down to freeze it. That thing gets delivered in Korea frozen, it's worth $75,000. Okay? Excuse me, $50,000. I overstated. It's $50,000 frozen. They lost $125,000 of revenue on that one container, and they're shipping 40 or 50 at once. So you got millions of dollars lost. Now, when that happens, the logistics guy has to go report to the vice president for international sales of these companies, and he's got numbers to meet, he's got millions of dollars of sales to make. And the guy says, "Look, I don't care what the problem is. Where did you ship it through? I shipped it through whatever port." Well, I don't care. They don't care. There's no pointing of fingers to this element or that element or other. They lost $125,000 on that one container and their 40 containers that went through, do the math. Find another way to get it there." And they work on other ways to get it there. So, you know, some of this is sort of, these are major issues, but it's playing in the sandbox here and from... sandbox here, and from 1,000 miles to the east here, where you're largest protein exporter, it's a problem. Now, here's what the greatest problem is. These are multinational conglomerates here. You can produce protein just as well in Brazil and Australia, and in some cases, if they've got a market in Korea that wants chilled pork, they will produce that chilled pork somewhere else in the world and get it, and then it doesn't flow through here at all. So I think the message is, there's lots of elements here, and nobody knows the elements of port operations better than the people working on the docks, people managing the docks, managing the terminals and the port authorities, but it's really kind of you guys, meaning all of you, that have to get it right, otherwise that cargo just doesn't come through here anymore. And we've got too many examples of that, unfortunately.
Okay. I think we'll take it back out to the audience. Somebody?
Good evening. Great panel tonight, thank you. One issue that needs to be discussed further is the trucking community. Truck drivers, we're losing truck drivers left and right to support the movement of cargo freely. The generation at hand used to work the ports for, they're retiring, and we are not getting any new drivers into the port to move the cargo because of the delays and because of payment. I mean, the wages, the freight, it's slow. That needs to be factored into the discussions. The commissioner, what are we, what plans are we doing? Because we need to solve the throughput fairly quickly, so we can make turns, and these guys make the money.
John, why don't you take that one, and it actually pairs into this other audience question. There's a severe shortage of drivers. How and what are we going to do about the availability of drivers?
Yes, it's clearly an economic issue. You know, making $20,000 a year driving a truck on a net basis after expenses is not an acceptable career choice. And so the next generation of people that typically would follow multiple generations into the trucking business are making different choices. And it's a chronic issue. We're seeing similar things in aviation, on the pilot side. There's all kinds of critical issues facing transportation today, none worse than the port-related trucking problem. We will fix this. This is in our control to fix. If we can do the job of starting with the system failures that we understand, and get those right, and we can start to increase turn times to two and three turn times in a day, then the trucker will be making adequate income to return on an investment that he's had to make in the truck, or the company that he works for will find it acceptable. But it's all tied to efficiency. It's not the trucker's fault. The trucker is simply hanging out in a line forever. It's over two hours now on average, waiting for a shipment. We believe that we know what the core issues are, but ultimately, with a demand-based system for access to the yard and to the cargo, combined with an abundance of equipment necessary to move that cargo off the terminal, the trucking part will solve itself. Now, whether or not that will attract people back into the business, the next generation of truckers, that's a bigger issue that we have to address, and I think we can address it through, really through an outreach and educational program through the universities, through the vocational schools, and begin to, once the problem is fixed, and it's going to be fixed, we're not going to go through another peak with this problem. So once that's fixed, we can start to make it attractive again for truckers to be in this business. And those that know me know that I ran a big trucking operation, and I'm extremely sensitized to what that environment is like. So we'll fix this, and we'll make it right for the truckers, we'll make it right for the longshoremen. You know, the inefficiencies are mind-boggling right now. You know, we're seeing, you know, almost a 40% increase in labor costs during this period of time, with like a 1% or 2% increase in productivity. Those are not sustainable numbers. So the entire system, from origin to destination, has to be integrated and systematized, and we, I believe we can do that.
I think that, Peter, is a quick follow-up, and then we'll, I understand that you are a global person in the ports, and you're going to be going to China with your commissioners, and we've got to get you on a plane, and we don't want you to have to dig to China. So we will have you make your follow-up, and then we'll have a closing question.
This, you talked about trucking, and this is a national problem, shortage of drivers, problem of drainage into Norfolk is terrible, in New York, New Jersey, it's almost worse than here. I mean, this is not unique here, that these issues. Long haul, regional, as well as drainage, it's a huge challenge. The way that we could really impact this is if the United States would adopt a truck weight system that Canada has, that Europe has, that the rest of the world has, where you can run at 96,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, as long as you have that third axle on there. Now, in terms of ports, California ports are the only ones that don't have the ability to be accessed by trucks at that weight limit. And Oregon, Washington, they do it. South Carolina did not have, South Carolina had the same law that you have in California, until two years ago, when they pulled everybody together. Labor, management, shippers, importers, exporters, everybody together, the highway patrol, and they got the state legislature to change that. Now Charleston and Savannah can have those heavier trucks, just like Seattle, Tacoma, and Portland can. And I think that could have a huge impact, because you can add 30% weight capacity, weight into each container safely, but it's a challenge, and if everybody here would pull together, that could dramatically alleviate some of this crisis.
Thank you for those thoughts. So I'm going to give you each a 30-second wrap-up here, and in this question, we'll go back to kind of the theme here, with all these global trends, and many of them out of our control. What can we control, and where can we find common ground moving forward and work together to solve problems? Start with you, Bobby, and we'll just loop.
Again, I think we're rehashing everything. I think when we sit down at the table together, and like I've had great discussions with Gene Soroka from the Port of Los Angeles, and with John, when we sit down and we talk about these problems, and we work out real-world solutions with all the stakeholders, rather than fighting over the minuscule day-to-day issues, I think we're going to find a level of cooperation and a level of success that we've never seen here in the twin ports. I know we have the leadership both with the Port of Long Beach and the Port of Los Angeles. We've got two great mayors with Eric Garcetti and Robert Garcia, that are willing to understand the ports. Once we do that, we're going to succeed. We've talked about a lot of problems tonight, we've talked about a lot of solutions, but again, it's us all sitting back down at the table and getting to the core issues, and I think John's a great example of the logistics chain. I've had great conversations with him, and I know we're going to make this move forward, but it's all going to be predicated on the cooperation and the transparency of everybody within the supply chain. And if we can do that, we're going to be a model of what ports around the world want to be, with the amount of cargo we're going to move, with the variation of cargo, the diversity of what we do. We can do this, it's just going to take some cooperation and transparency with all the stakeholders.
Peter?
That's very good. I agree 100% that everybody's got to work together. I just made a suggestion of how, you know, the hay growers in the Imperial Valley, and the almond growers, and Blue Diamond, and everybody up north, as well as the labor, as well as the terminals, as well as the port authorities, as well as the cities, should be marching on Sacramento to make a change in the truck weight limits here, so you can be at parity with other ports in the country. But there are other things can be done as well, and I know that the exporters and importers desperately want these ports to be absolutely as cost-effective, dependable, and efficient as possible, because without it, some of them are going to go out of business. So they're willing to work, and thank you very much. I also want to say that Gene Soroka, the Port of Los Angeles, got a good one, and I think the leadership down here at these two ports now in combination has never been greater.
John?
Thanks. You know, I tend to be very strategic, and I want to talk about macro stuff, but I think right now, we have got to stay very, very tactical. We have to be very focused on fixing problems. While I don't disagree with heavyweight truck lanes and all that, you know, we don't have five or 10 years to deal with the problem. We have less than one year to be completely fixed, and that's what this focus is going to be. So maybe in a future meeting, we can talk about the trade flows, and manufacturing shifts, and all those kinds of great things that are happening, actually advantaging the Americas. And I think, I see the future of exports being very robust, not declining. I think energy and all the things are pointing to an incredibly robust future for the Americas, and particularly North America. But I do think none of that matters if we don't have, on a very myopic, very regional basis, a robust, highly efficient, well-operated port structure, and that's what my focus is right now.
Okay, well, I think that our panelists left us with some messages that are going to resonate with us all for a very long time. Why don't we give them a big round of applause?
And let me add my thanks as well, for a really fascinating discussion. Thank you, Kristen, for leading it. I know, John, we do need to get him on a plane, so I'll, at this point, I will dismiss the panel. And I also want you to be able to sit down at your seat, because very rarely, when you're in an auditorium or in a theater, are you asked to take out your phones, but that's what we want to do at this point. I know that we didn't get to all the questions. When we do our summary report, we're going to bring some of those into our write-up. But we also want to give you a chance now to provide some feedback on what you heard tonight, and what you think the key issues are. So we're going to be pulling up the code, which you should have already downloaded, and there it is, right? And actually, if you want to, if you haven't downloaded it yet, and you would like to, you could actually point your phone at the screen, and it should take you and launch the survey, which is now open. It's very quick, we have two quick ques, excuse me, two questions that we want to ask. The other way you can access it, if you haven't downloaded the QR app, is to actually put in the URL, which is surveymonkey.com/s/cit2014. And that's going to bring you up to our, we've got two principal questions we're going to discuss, and then a third question asks what you'd like to see us discuss at the next town hall. So with that, Dr. Giuliano, Dr. Jen Giuliano, the Met Trans Director, and the Ferraro Chair on Effective Local Government, and the Senior Associate Dean of Research and Technology at the Saul Price School of Public Policy at USC, is going to take us into that feedback portion and go over your two questions.
Thank you, Tom. I've been joking with Tom all evening about how I usually do this summing up, right? And this is called stump the professor. So just because you thought you could do this, now we're going to change all the rules, which is what's happening tonight. So there are the two questions that you can answer on your smartphone, and the idea here is that you're going to be answering them, and I'm told that our technology experts up there need a whole 36 seconds to be able to create the result which you're going to see on the screen, okay? So you actually, while I'm talking for a couple minutes, this is, you know, sort of like in class, you don't really have to pay attention because you all are on your smartphones, right? So while you're doing that, I actually wanted to make just a really quick couple of points that I thought really came out tonight. And I think our title today was perfect, the global and the local thing. And the reason I think it's perfect is that the global stuff is about dynamics and shifts, right? And so in my sort of simple-minded way, I think of supply and demand. And what we heard about was the shifts in supply and demand that are happening all over the globe, and they're happening because of changing income levels, and population growth in different parts of the world, and changing education levels, and so on and so forth. So there's all of this churning that's going on globally, which means that for any given port or place, like Southern California, the uncertainty about the future is probably bigger than it's ever been, because we really can't predict how these things are going to play out. So that's the first thing. The second thing is what I'm going to call the logic of cargo, that I thought was brought out very loud and clear here tonight, meaning that cargo is like traffic of any other sort, and it's also like water. It just finds the best place to flow, and that's what you heard tonight. For anybody who's shipping anything from A to B, the only thing that matters is how can I get it there better, faster, and cheaper than any other option, right? And so you heard a lot about, no matter where the shifts are going to be, the logic of cargo doesn't go away, and it doesn't change. So what does that mean? It means the local lesson, or the local message, which is point number three, is that the stakes are higher than they've ever been, and so the competitive environment is more competitive than it's ever been, which means that all of the problems that you heard about tonight and the need of cooperation are probably as important as they've ever been historically, at least in the recent life of these ports. So with that, I'm always happy to hear at these town hall events about cooperation and collaboration and name for us. I also want to point out that that's not easy, that people have very valid, different perspectives in how to best solve problems, and the real trick here is how you get people together and actually compromise and do something. So that's it from me, and I think we should get a result for question one. Somebody roll a drum, something? Tom? I could keep talking, but it would be nice to have a result. What's his name, Justin?
There we go.
Ah, hooray, okay. So this is all of you in the audience. So what global trade trend is most likely to have the greatest impact in Southern California? And you have three items that are almost have the same level of responses. That's kind of unusual when we do surveys like that. So you, the global manufacturing and development markets are all about what I said at the beginning, the global part of the economic shifts that are going on. The larger vessels, I think, is a response to what we heard. I always talk about these large vessels as the snake swallowing the pig or something. It's really hard on the rest of the supply chain in many ways, and I think that's what's being picked up there. And then we're not too worried about an uncertain energy future, and we're not too worried about environmental issues in terms of getting, leveling the playing field. Okay, can we go to two? Okay. Which of the following responses, meaning what should we be paying attention to? And here you see actually a much different and more typical distribution, that almost two-thirds of you said, let's solve the infrastructure problems, as the most important thing, and it would be nice if we had more time to talk about it. But what we heard from Peter was that we have a real issue with exports, right? Because we don't have the massive rail system that would be necessary to actually get things to the port in a timely manner. We heard from John Sangerleb that even if you did that, the ports couldn't handle exports in a timely manner, and so on. That's really important, because imports are probably going to decline, and so if we're in the business of looking for more business, much of it could, and because expanding markets are offshore rather than onshore in terms of demand, then those kinds of issues are really big issues. The other things, it's interesting that nothing even comes close in terms of actions. The other things, it's interesting that nothing even comes close in terms of actions. We had other, I don't know if, okay, no others. Okay, I'm getting the signal from the expert. I have a feeling that if we had articulated these questions in real time instead of doing them in advance, we probably would have asked a lot more about product, aspects of productivity at the ports. And I think we would have gotten more interesting answers in terms of, is it really chassis? Is it really not enough labor? Is it really truckers? And so on. I think that would have, you would have had a lot more perspective on that, given the audience that we have here. So I hope that you enjoyed this idea of doing a few real-time questions. If you did, let us know. Remember that your third question is, "What should we do next year and in coming town halls?" So with that, I'm going to bring Tom up here to call an end to this town hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Giuliano. And thank you again to our moderator and the panelists for what's a really engaging discussion. I learned a lot tonight. Tonight's proceedings will be captured in a summary report that's going to be made available on our website. If you'd like a copy of the video, please go to the CITT website as well to find out how you can obtain a copy. And finally, before we break, we owe a great debt of gratitude to many, many people who dedicated their time and effort and money, financial resources, to make this happen. I want to thank first and foremost outside Alex Traver, our talented coordinator, and her amazing team, including Diane Delaterre, Brenda Gonzalez, Angelie Logan, and numerous other volunteers, who made sure that we got tonight underway and completed successfully. It's the second big event in two weeks for Alex. She was also responsible for the Prevention First Conference for the State Lands Commission, so she's done a tremendous job under difficult circumstances. Our student support at CITT, Jubin Sucadia, our tech person, Savannah Baroud, Brendan Seines, Louis Nuno, Tyler Powell, and Jennifer Tran, thank you for providing all your support. I want to mention again, today's event is hosted by CITT, the College of Continuing and Professional Education, and the Met Trans Transportation Center, with financial contribution generous support from the Ports of LA and Long Beach, Majestic Realty Company, LA Metro, the Southern California Association of Governments, APM Terminals, the ILWU Locals 1363 and 94, the Alameda Quarter Transportation Authority, ABILITY Trimodal, Long Beach City College, Watson Land Company, BNSF Railway, LA Customs Broker, and Freight Forwarders Association as well. So thank you very much. And now, I don't know, Jubin, do we have any suggestions for next year? We do. So as we thank you for coming and as you take leave, if you want a little bit of inspiration for what you can look forward to next year, we've got a long list already to consider, including some of the things that we heard tonight. Alliances, productivity, ports, too soon to tell, the steering committee should discuss fresh ideas. Okay, we'll take that. And obviously, the question of chassis has resonated, and there's some suggestions there. So this is all good food for thought. If you want to add your comments on the hard copies, please leave those as you leave, and we'll take it all into consideration. And look for continued news from CITT. We hope to be discussing some of these events in a webinar format before next year's town hall. So thank you, and with this, I will close the evening. Good night.